Well, good evening. I apologize for the delayed start, but it seems that we do have audio at this point, thanks to the good work of the city clerk. So let us begin with Mr. Doring leading us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no ever taking justice for all.
All right. Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilor Doring.
Here.
Kroll.
Here.
Pitts.
Here. Before we get to public comment, let me turn to Mr. Carnegie for any preliminary comment, if that's appropriate.
Let me, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, if you'd like, I could just do a brief overview of the workshop here tonight, kind of set the stage, if that's agreeable. Let me talk, at least to start with, from a staff standpoint, there's a number of things we like to accomplish in this meeting, not a lot of things, but really three things. Number one is to establish a base general plan document that all parties agree on. Today, we've been kind of, not kind of, we have, there's been a problem as to what is the general plan with multiple documents out there, and I'll touch on it in a minute, what has, staff has gone through to get the document that's currently in front of council, but that's definitely one of the main purposes, from a staff perspective, of the meeting tonight. The other is, we would like to hear back from council and the public on what would be considered to be more macro level issues, particularly issues that could affect how the environmental document is put together, and essentially with having established a new base document, and getting some feedback on issues that could affect the sequel analysis, we will then go ahead and complete the sequel work. In terms of the base document, what you have in front of you is the compilation of quite a bit of effort from a staff standpoint. Essentially, we had a general plan, actually a couple of versions with the same date, dated back October 2010, had to kind of sort out which was the correct one, and which was newer, which was older. Then staff essentially, literally, went through boxes of files and watched numerous videos, and also, there had been a compilation, kind of a running compilation, put together in track, changes format of the various changes that had occurred since 2010, and by compiling all those efforts, staff has been able to update the document that you currently have in front of you, from what essentially was last addressed, was last fully updated in 2010. What you have in front of you reflects all the changes at numerous council meetings since then, I'm guessing thirty-plus meetings total. So, it's perhaps not a perfect document, but it's the best we could put together, and I think that's a major part of what we're trying to accomplish here, is say, this is the base document we're heading, going forward with, and obviously, if there's some issues or concerns with that, we could, need to hear those tonight. Also like to emphasize, we are in no way starting over. What you have in front of you is a document that was put together, actually, the effort started in 2007 with the General Plan Committee, which created a document in 2010, and then literally, four years of city council hearings, and so what you have in front of you is a document that reflects all that hard work, so literally, we're almost there. So staff would recommend that the city council hold the workshop tonight, hear from the public, provide direction to staff on, I guess, what you'd consider to be macro issues that would affect the secret document. Staff then will incorporate that direction, will finalize the secret document with the intent of being, of having council action on the general plan this summer. So that's the goal of this effort, is to get this thing done. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe there's a letter that was submitted from the law firm of Schutzholli Weinberg concerning some language in the general plan, and I guess, taking exception with that, so that's one item for council to take up. I would note that the letter treats that language as new language, actually, it's not new language, it was language from the 1993 plan that was carried forward, word by word, into the current plan, so, just a bit of background. So anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then, from there, conduct the workshop.
All right, are there any initial questions from council? Then, let me open it up to the public, and again, our time limits are three minutes per speaker, and let me underscore again, that the issue here is to focus on macro issues. We're not going to engage in wordsmithing tonight, it's macro issues.
Sandra Erickson, Scott Street, and in 2010, I made it a personal career to follow this general plan thing right straight through every single meeting, every single document, and I've documented every single thing that I could possibly document. I did it because, in 2010, because the general plan that was put together by a general consensus of all the people in St. Helena, was considered, by some, living in a certain geographic area, to be highly problematic, and they formed a community improvement group to change the direction that the general plan was going. They were very successful, the community was not responsive, thinking the job was done, they put their candidates in office, they spent four years changing the general plan from the 2010 version, which had already been approved by the Planning Commission, and had gone through, I think, maybe three and a half years, twenty-two people in town. That was a legitimate general plan, focused and directed by very well-paid and highly educated professional people. There was nothing wrong with it that statistical updates because of, you know, changing demographics or traffic studies wouldn't bring up to date. So I find the fact that we are now presented with what I call the changed version of the 2010 general plan to be the subject of this meeting, I think it's better for those who want that to go forward, to justify their position. Never, in any of these meetings, over four years, thirty-odd meetings, has anyone said what was wrong with the general plan from 2010 that all the people in the city put together, for the first time, in a highly professional manner. So, if people want a changed version, put forth by five people on this city council, who had a political ideology and a solidly organized organization in back of them, want a general plan to go forward, that is not what the people put together, then I think they should say why, and I think this council should say why also. Otherwise, I think that two things ought to happen. A, we adopt the 2010 general plan and amend it, and it can be amended up the kazoo for however reason, but those are open public meetings, and everybody can chime in on that. Or B, someone sits down, and I'm perfectly willing to be part of that committee, to pick out the changes and present them that are most problematic, and I was invited to do so by Victor, but I was unwilling to support the previous administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Susan Kenward, and I want to say thank you to the mayor and to the city council for all your hard work. I'm here tonight representing Citizens Voice, which is a 501(c)(4), which we've just recently formed, and we are concerned with many parts of the current general plan that have been amended from the 2010, as well as language that was in the 1993 general plan, which Victor spoke to. It's not that we are, it's not that we think that that should be kept, we have issues with that as well. But the general plan is something that I am not, it's way out of my expertise, I have not a clue how to begin doing this, and so we have engaged, as you said, the law firm of Schutzholli and Weinberger in San Francisco, which is a really well-respected land use and environmental lawyer, who's done lots of work on general plans throughout California and the wine country, as well as issues, land use issues in the wine country. And they have helped a lot of citizens get what they really want in their community, not what the administration wants. She is, since this has come on so fast, we, I know it's not fast for you, but the notice in the paper is fast for us, they are, she is reviewing all the conditions of the proposed 2010, the changes in the 2010, and how it changed from the 1993, which is currently in place. One of our greatest concerns is the language concerning a winery. For the past 100 years, the city zoning has recognized only two types of wineries within the city limits, with the exception of Maryvale. There was a winery with five acres, with a primary house attached, and there's a winery with 20 acres, with 20 acres that issues less input on the surrounding community. There are no other wineries within the city limits. Those are the only two definitions in the zoning. However, there is a loophole in which recently people have been jumping through, that occurs in the 1993 plan, where it says, service commercial can have a winery, without defining or referring back to the type of wineries that are recognized in the zoning. This is the language that we are going to correct, and we are sending, she's preparing a legal language for this, we are hoping you will share our concerns. If it's not done now, we're going to do it on the ballot in 2016, because we're really adamant to have wineries, a winery without land attached, in service commercial, or in commercial, or in industrial, with any amount of land, with no vineyard, but with any amount of land undetermined, is really a mistake for this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff Ellsworth-Silvana, are we going to have an opportunity to talk further through this evening, or is this our one space?
This is your one space.
Okay. Well, I guess I'm going to echo what Sandy said, and what Susan said, that we need to, as we go forward, talking about this general plan, we need to make sure it's the general plan that the majority of the people of St. Helena want, and that can be, you know, if it has to go to the ballot, it has to go to the ballot, you know, as you know, we know how to do that, and we will do it. So I think we need to proceed with the understanding that we're all working together. I do also have an issue with five people spending a number of years reworking the general plan. I think we need to know that it's something that the people of St. Helena want, I think everybody, St. Helena countywide, they're tired of waking up and saying, hey, how did that, you know, leaf blower factory just show up next to me? That's a, what would you call that, analogy? You know what I mean? Everybody's tired of it. So we want to make sure that the general plan we put in place is the one the people want, and we will be sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
George David, excuse me, Pope Street, St. Helena. I'd actually like to start by thanking the hard-working individuals who were serving on the Planning Commission and the city council, who've spent years reviewing more current information, so that a plan could be developed that, in fact, is now, as opposed to five years ago, or 1993. The previous work was based on census data from 2000. Clearly, the 2010 census provided significant information that caused a lot of thought to occur, and a significant amount of change to be contemplated, to recognize and carry forth the trends that were recognized from the census work. There's been a major shift in the city's responsibility under its Rena allocation. The county, pardon me, the city of Napa at American Canyon, where land is cheaper, where construction is cheaper, where more land is abundant and available, agreed to provide the vast majority of the affordable housing that is to be built in Napa County. Since there's more, it's more economic, it's more feasible, and it's probably more achievable. We now have a fresh body of work in front of us. I've reviewed the 160-plus pages of notes and changes that, in fact, were considered and made to the document. It's a Herculean task. Anyone who had anything to say, at any point in time, could have expressed themselves, could have written letters, could have done whatever it was that they chose to do, if they were so offended by the document that we have before us tonight. So I'd like to, again, commend those who have put the work and effort into this, and say, it's time to move forward. There's enough work that's been done on this. We have a great document, let's go.
Thank you, Mr. David.
Thank you.
Further comment?
Good evening, I'm Faith Echtermeyer, I've lived in St. Helena at least 33 years. I'd like to read the section that has been added to the general plan, LU 5.6, permit wineries and other agriculture-related industry to locate in the city if their location does not adversely impact surrounding uses or city services, in parentheses, water, traffic, et cetera, or the quality and character of the community. To me, essentially, this is no guidance at all. This can be interpreted any way, any way anyone wishes. That means every proposal that comes before the city is going to be an argument. What is a winery? I mean, traditionally, a winery has been a small building attached to a vineyard, where grapes are turned into wine. What about places that don't have vineyard? I think they should be classified as production facilities, and as a production facility, it's a factory, it's a food processing plant. If we want to, if we have space in our small town for plant, food processing plants like this, I'd say, okay, let's permit them, but without any tastings, any hospitality events, any signage even, because we don't have the space in our community to add on more buildings of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Guy Kay, I live in Kearney Street. I'd like to put this in a context which is lighter than expressed here. The 2010 plan facilitated the development of infrastructure. In my 85 years of being on this planet, the planet has gone from 2 billion people to 7 billion people. If I live to be 95, there will be 8 billion people, a fourfold increase in one human lifetime. That pressure will apply to every place in the world, including St. Helena, and the infrastructure that's necessary to support the population that's coming onto this planet needs to be thought of now, okay, not in the future. That means appropriate circulation element that allows for the long-term development of circulation in the community. The Aves family lost their house to an eminent domain, so that Star Avenue could go forward. Star Avenue was intended to be a collector, it went out through to Adams Street. That shows up in the 2010, and it should stay in the plan, it's extremely important. And the extension of Adams Street to the river and across the river is critical for the long-term circulation, not only within St. Helena, but within the county. Putting it differently, it's important for us to recognize that there are all kinds and modes of transportation, including bicycles and little electric vehicles and so forth, but we have to accommodate for the population and the circulation that's coming on for, within the next 25 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kay.
Hi, I'm Lisa Toller. My husband Joel and I live close to Harold Smith and Son, and I sent you all a letter, and I also sent it to the Planning Commission, about some language that's new to me, I hadn't seen it before, in the general plan, and it addresses noise, and what it says is to incorporate right-to-farm legal provisions relative to noise in all newly-created deeds where agricultural activities may pose noise impacts in the future. And then it goes on to say, require similar verbiage in deeds for properties similarly impacted by the Harold Smith and Son gravel plant operations. I fail to see why a gravel plant operation should be afforded the right-to-farm provisions that a true agricultural operation would have. We and our neighbors have come to the Planning Commission last October, and presented information about increased noise, traffic, and dust that is coming from the operation. We have continued to work with the Planning Department and Victor on gathering more information about this, and hoping to address the situation in the near future, but in the meantime, I feel like it is an undue hardship on homeowners in that residential area to have to put something like this in any deed when they, when they sell their property. We already, you know, have to disclose and acknowledge that we live next to a gravel plant, but I don't understand why we should have to put additional right-to-farm provisions in our deeds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Kay, I live on Kearney Street. I would like to speak to Section 5 Element, which is the circulation plan. It states the goal of providing safe, efficient, well-maintained circulation system. Future road extensions in Figure 5.2 of the general plan show Star Avenue extended, College Avenue extended, McCorkle Avenue extended, these would all be extended to Mills Lane. Mitchell is to be extended to Charter Oak, but through, I need my glasses, but these are to be bicycle and pedestrian and emergency vehicles. Emergency vehicles like ambulances and fire trucks would require a road, not a pedestrian or bike path. If they are to be for autos, a truck upgrade requires a special study, as written in this general plan. The council must then approve the special study. This will not provide for the stated goal in this, that you have written for the goal. As an older citizen, I can't walk long distances or ride a bike, I got rid of my bike several years ago, so I think you need to be thinking about that issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bernie Buckley, Meadow Creek Circle, St. Helena. You know, I want to commend the people that have worked for the last five years. I hear a lot of sour grapes about elections, I could have sour grapes about this election. And, but I, but I look at it, and we have good, quality people, making good, quality decisions, and the circulation, I, maybe I don't understand it, but it seems to me that we're just trying to get people off of Main Street, and sending everybody down through the residential neighborhoods. A few weeks ago, Rick Henry wrote an article in the Star, a letter to the editor, one of his grandchildren chased a ball on Allison, almost got hit by a car, and he thanked the people for driving slow. Well, you can have a lot more of that if you put these extensions through. They don't make a lot of sense. All you do in this town, you have two thoroughfares, you have Silverado Trail, and you have Main Street. The traffic on Main Street gets bad once in a while, not that bad, but it gets bad once in a while. If you take those people, and you put them down through Star Avenue, through residential neighborhoods, where elderly people live, children play in the streets, they're going to go down a couple of blocks, and they're going to come back onto Main Street, that's all there is. There is no reason for these street extensions to move people four blocks, to spend all the money you want to spend to do them, they don't make any sense. For the lady that can't ride a bike anymore, that's, that's too bad, but there's a bus for a dollar that will pick her up and take her anywhere in St. Helena she wants to go. And I know that a lot of people spend a lot of time thinking about this general plan, but the last three or four years, there's been a lot of good, quality input, and like Sandy Erickson said, if you want to tweak something, you can tweak it, and they did, and they made good improvements, and I hope that this will be passed, because we don't need to go any further with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is Ron Sproat, I live on Tainter, I have some notes, I can't read them because my eyesight's not that good, so I ramble a bit. Unlike Mr. Davis, I have not read this entire updated general plan, but I do have some comments, and hopefully you'll find them useful. The original draft of the general plan, in my opinion, I appeared at the original meetings, I came to a lot of council meetings, and entered some objections, because it seemed to me that it had been run away with by a couple of people, and became a full-growth build-out, St. Helena to the last damn smidgen of property. And generally, I'm against that, and I voiced those opinions, and was kind of put off. We'll take that up later, and it never got taken up later. Subsequently, the population declined, pressures to build declined, the water became scarcer and scarcer, and it's still a bit of a flaky issue, in that we don't have enough storage to take care of all of our current citizens. So, there has been a change, there has been a lot of word tweaking, there has been public meetings, and the tone of the general plan has changed, partly because it's, it no longer says, let's encourage building till the last dime is spent. And secondly, there were a number of meetings that nobody seems to bring up or care much about, in my experience here. We had public meetings, we had open meetings, we had attend-and-give-us-your-Idea meetings, we had telephone analysis of what people wanted, and one of them was to downsize the housing element, and extensions, we've talked about street extensions, and as I recall, almost everybody who lives in the Cronella Development came here and appeared, and they all adamantly said, we do not want to extend library lane, we don't want our children in danger, and that also applied to the extension of Oak Street, the extension of McCorkle, and all these extensions that really aren't going to fix anything. As Bernie said, there's two As Bernie said, there's two thoroughfares up the valley. That is never going to change. There's not going to be a third. There is enough money to change anything. So we're always going to have slowdowns. And so my position is adopt what you've done. I know this group has spent immense hours and days working on it. It's acceptable and it can be tweaked if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment?
Hi there, I'm Cynthia Smith. I'm an attorney at Coombs and Dunlap. I'm also a resident of St. Helena. I live on Stockton Street. But I'm here tonight representing Harold Smith and I wanted to address the general plan as to that and Ms. Toller's comments. Just briefly, Harold Smith and Sons has been in existence since 1917. It currently has 65 employees and it contributes $200,000 in sales tax revenue to the city of St. Helena. Recently, there have been concerns expressed by neighbors regarding noise and traffic. And Harold Smith, I've been involved with Harold Smith for the last year, actively trying to work with the city. There was the meeting at the Planning Commission where it was discussed. And Harold Smith has been working with the city to try to address the issues of noise, of traffic, and to see what Harold Smith could do to mitigate its impact on the neighbors because certainly there is an impact on the neighbors. With respect to the general plan, proposed general plan language, which I believe is at PS 2.1, which Ms. Toller was referencing, where it says it required similar language in deeds for properties similarly impacted by Harold and Sons gravel plant operations. And it was referring back to the language regarding right-to-farm. Well, if you look in the 1993 plan at 8-14, it says, "The city of St. Helena is committed to protecting the ongoing operation of certain activities such as agriculture and the gravel quarry on Sulphur Springs Creek. New homeowners in areas affected by agriculture and industrial operations should be required to sign a right-to-farm disclosure acknowledging the potential for noise, pardon me, disturbances." So that language or similar language is actually in the 1993 plan. And I would just encourage the council to continue acknowledging the importance of Harold Smith and the contributions it makes to our community. And similarly, Harold Smith is working very hard to address neighbors' issues, to work with the city, to mitigate noises. We've, it's hired an acoustical engineer, beginning, I think it was in October, and we're working with that acoustical engineer right now to figure out what else can be done to mitigate the noise and the impact on the neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Ethan Brown, excuse me, 489 Fulton Lane. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. I wanted to comment on the land use element. With apologies to the mayor, this may be considered a comment in the weeds, so I'll try to make it more of a general comment. But the previous general plan, which I think 1993 is still the prevailing general plan, provided very specific language about certain things. In particular, it had language such as, "Within the 820 and winery zoning districts, residential uses are permitted at a ratio of one dwelling unit per five acres," provided that after the first unit, any additional units would be restricted to one-half acre or less. Staff is well aware of grappling with this issue with current applications for lot line adjustments and lot splits. My concern is, this is dropped out. Whether it's this version, perhaps it's in the 2010 version, I don't know. But closest thing I can find is LU 5.3 that says, "Strictly limit development on properties existing at the time of the adoption of the general plan that are designated or used as ag land." My concern is, I get the philosophy, which is to provide sort of general guidance and direction and let the details be found in the ordinances, the zoning ordinance in this case. My concern is, with respect to something like this that's driving the zoning ordinances, the real backbone is in the general plan. We see a lot of variances to zoning ordinances, but not to the general plan. I'd urge you to reconsider the general philosophy of providing sort of, you know, vague and simple language. And Faith brought up another good example with respect to wineries. And revisit some of the great language that was in the 1993 version. Otherwise, my, one of the concerns I have is that if and when this general plan gets adopted, you're going to see, you will need an effort on the zoning ordinance side to retain the intention, which is there's a baseline. There's a lot of language in the zoning ordinance, 820, that says, you know, talks about parcels in place on October 1, 1993, when that plan went into place. And it provides a baseline for how many units can be developed and how big. And the idea is to retain ag and minimize the number and size of land that's converted to residential. My concern is if we don't handle this perfectly, there'll be like a reset button for developers to start over again with the 2015 or whatever we're going to call it, general plan, and further subdivide lots in 820. So I know it's convoluted and I know staff's well aware of it and understands what I'm chasing. I'm out of time. I want to talk about circulation. And I'll just make one general comment.
Sure.
I think our primary issue is volume and timing. Outside of peak hours, I think things function pretty well. And so there's a general comment, which is to provide better priority towards coordination with the county and other municipalities to minimize volume and peak loads. There's a lot of other good stuff that's about, that's in the details, like biking and, you know, street extensions and whatnot. Those, any effort on those elements will pale in comparison to reductions of volume and peak. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
I'm Wendell Laidley and I live on Hunt Avenue. I'd like to, first of all, echo George Davidson's comments about some good work on trying to fix issues that came out of earlier planning. And then I'd like to respond to Sandra Erickson's comments about, I think, the group that was formed on the east side, of which I was a happy, proud member, called the Sure Frog Group. I remember that was formed to oppose the, let's call it, commercialization of Star Avenue. And I am certainly happy to make the, to say publicly that I believe, and I'm very confident, that the levee was built to protect Dennis Hunter's property. It was not built to vineyard, protect Vineyard Valley against flood protection, flooding. And a simple analysis of the location of the levee shows that. I don't like to, perhaps, I don't want to raise the elephant in the room, but it's obvious to a number of us on the east side that the levee was also built to protect Dennis Hunter's property and make sure that no big, affordable housing projects were built on the west side. Now, that may sound provocative, but I ask you to consider that in the obvious density differential between the west and the east. I'd like to consider, ask you to consider rezoning of the land adjacent to the Napa River on the west side. In 1973, all of that land was zoned medium-density residential, which is a very common parking designation for land that we don't really know what we want to do, but we'll decide later. Most people, certainly those in the development business, know that zoning is not vested until a building permit is approved. So I would like, former Mayor Navarro brought that up in 2011 and was immediately swept off her feet by the developer who owns that property behind the levee, claiming constitutional and all kinds of other silly rights, which he has, that have no validity. Finally, I'd like to echo Victor's comments about so much of the text from previous plans being carried forward, word for word. That's the kind of thing that, yes, on one side, as Ethan says, sets a good example at one time, if it's a good example, but if not, it's a great excuse for copying stuff that had no validity in the first place. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Ms. Erickson, we only hear from people once, only once. We have to apply these rules evenly. Any further public comment?
My name is Grace Kistner and I wasn't going to do this. However, I was a member of the terrible, terrible general plan update committee and I see a few council people here that were. I know some people on the Planning Commission that were beside myself. I also happen to live on the wrong side of town with Mr. Laidley and I kind of resent the remarks that we picked apart the west side of town to protect, or the east side of town to protect the west side of town. That was not true. Excuse me, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? All right, let me close the public comment and invite council discussion. Let me begin by asking whether there are any initial questions of staff. And let me pose this. This is coming to us from the Planning Commission, is that right?
Yes.
Well, the April 2015 general plan.
Well, yes and no. The Planning Commission formally reviewed, last formally reviewed the general plan in October 2010. The, more recently, the Planning Commission reviewed the various changes from when the city council had made to the general plan since the commission last reviewed it in October 2010. Those, there were a number of comments. Many of those, those comments are, from a staff perspective, fall under the category of, I wouldn't say necessarily wordsmithing, but individual wording changes. So those edits that the commission made to, just the changes, not the underlying text, are not included in this document. When this document comes to council for action, we, staff will bring forward those various changes that the commission requested. We didn't purposefully include those because a lot of those changes get down into the weeds, so to speak, in terms of individual wording changes.
Does the Planning Commission then get another opportunity to review this document before it comes back to us?
Technically, if the city council makes additional changes from what the commission last saw, then yes. And also, the issue on the environmental document still needs to be addressed in terms of the question of recirculation. If that happens, then the environmental document will come back to the Planning Commission. So it's kind of a, it kind of depends, I guess, is the best way of summarizing it. Maybe the attorney could bail me out here if I'm, yeah.
Do you have a question there?
Yeah. Mr. Brown brought up, I guess, a concern about the change in the language in the ag, which would, from the 93 general plan, took out the ability to split off half-acre parcels. Could you just make a clarification to the council as to, by taking that language out? And I think my interpretation would be that that means that you cannot subdivide further down for residential lots on the ag parcels.
That was certainly our intention.
Yeah. Is that correct?
That would definitely be my interpretation also. Usually what happens after a general plan update is an update to the zoning ordinance to bring that into compliance. Right now, as mentioned by the speaker, the zoning ordinance has a language that expressly allows land in the 820 zone to be subdivided. So my conclusion, if that language is not, or ability is not spelled out in the general plan, then the zoning would need to be amended to be consistent with the general plan.
Because it was our intention not to allow that.
Right, right.
It's simply in the land use section. I don't recall exactly where in the 93 general plan it is. The point is, in the new general plan, there is no language. There's simply a language that indicates that in the agricultural zone, the lot size, minimum lot size is, it's a 20-acre minimum. And the 93 general plan had language that provided for parcels that were existing prior to 1993 were allowed to split as if into essentially five-acre minimum parcels. So that new, that old language has not been brought forward into the new general plan, into the new land use element.
So in other words, it's omission means it's not possible.
Correct.
So long as we change the zoning text to reflect that.
So maybe we should make it a little clearer, since it seems to be somewhat ambiguous.
All right. Let me, let me start this way here, because I think a significant issue that's before us is whether the council wishes to go back to the 2010 plan and move forward there, or whether the sentiment is to take the 2015 plan and discuss the issues, or at least some of them, that were raised this evening, and then move forward from that perspective. And it seems to me that each member of the council should speak briefly to that so we know what our starting point is. Mr. Pitts?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'd like to start with the 2015 version and raise, you know, discuss the issues and move forward from that point.
I completely agree. I mean, I spent until 10:30 or 11:00 every single council meeting for a year going through this document, literally, word for word, making changes. Sometimes changes were made that I didn't agree with and sometimes, and, but it was a process. It was completely transparent. It was on television. Anyone from the public was welcome to participate and they did. And so I strongly believe we need to proceed with the 2015 plan and not go back to the 2010.
Mr. Doring?
I, you know, after analyzing this and working on this for months and years, I am convinced that this current plan is fraught with so many problems that it exposes the city to litigation. I feel more comfortable going back to the 2010 plan, working on that. I just have seen so many issues in this and I know we're staying on the macro level. And that's no one's fault, but I'm very concerned. There's internal inconsistency. The whole philosophy behind the urban limit line is problematic. The circulation work was, in my view, not based on expert analysis and is problematic for me personally for development of the Adams Street property. I think there's an internal inconsistency just on that issue alone with extensions and development. The implementing actions have been watered down and they're not actions anymore. And so that language, we can all kind of talk about that language, encourage versus consider and that kind of thing. But for me, it's sort of, it's almost the product of parochial interest to a certain degree, and that's to be expected in a small town. People come forward and they try to lobby, but I'm not comfortable with this plan. I'm willing to work with you. I understand the commitment and the many, many, many nights working on this plan. I understand the commitment and the many, many, many nights working on this plan, but in my heart of hearts, I couldn't live with myself if I said, yes, I'm comfortable with that from a legal perspective.
It's ironic you say that, because we changed, there were so many things in the 2010 plan that we felt exposed the city to liability that we intentionally changed so that it wouldn't expose them.
I'm just telling you how I feel, and I'm willing to reach out, work with common ground, find areas that we can bridge the gap. I want it to remain open. I'd like to get this general plan done, and I want it to be fully embraced by the community. You can tell that it's not going to be. That's the problem. That's the one big problem.
Mr. White?
Well, I'm in concurrence with Greg and Sharon that we start with the April 15, 2015 plan. I also agree that, that there was a lot of language that we felt put, put the city into a precarious position of being forced into doing things, whether we had the resources and the funding to do. And so my opinion is, is that we go from here. And we've made a lot of updates, and, I mean, if we went back to the 2010 version, then the safe yield part of it goes out, and we're starting from, from almost scratch again. So that's where I'm wanting to start.
Well, it's clear that a majority of the council believes that we should start with the 2015 plan and move forward from there. I share some of the current concerns that Mr. Doring raised, and there can be discussion of those concerns as we move forward. Quite frankly, as a highly experienced litigation lawyer, I don't share, and never shared, the thought that a general plan, which is to a large extent an aspirational document, presented much risk from a litigation point of view, apart perhaps from the housing element, which is state mandated and state-approved. And in this document, at the beginning, there is caveat language that makes the point that it, it's a general plan and is not to be used for purposes of asserting liability. And quite frankly, it would seem strange to me if the California courts did not, in general, take that approach. But having said that, it's, the majority of the council wishes to proceed with the April 2015 plan, and so I do think we need to work from that. And I suppose the way to do it on a macro basis is to go through it chapter by chapter and see whether any member of the council wishes to raise anything with respect to a specific chapter. And so, let's go with Chapter One, which is the introduction. And again, this is for purposes of providing guidance on macro issues to staff, and it is not for the purpose of trying to write language here this evening, at least from my perspective. Chapter Two.
I have two, actually, yes, two mac, two or three macro issues. One is about our, our current density ranges for low, medium, and high-density residential. And the General Plan states that new development should be consistent with the character of the existing neighborhoods as it relates to density. And I've looked at a map of St. Helena with a little square that was one acre in size, and looked through neighborhoods all over the place and, and that were zoned low, medium, and high. And I found that the current actual ranges seem to be inconsistent with the ranges that we currently have in our 93 General Plan and in this draft. And I think that we may want to have staff look at that and reconsider, or if we find that 5.1 to 16, and I think with high density, there may be some state regulations that mandate what that is. But with medium in particular, we may be in a position right now as a city where if someone came in and bought a lot that was medium density, he could, you know, put 16 units on. It might be very inconsistent with the current character of our, of our community. And so I, I think it's a good time to look at that, maybe have staff analyze a little bit and tell us, you know, in certain neighborhoods, what are the current densities? And if we really want to say that we're going to be consistent with what exists today, then we should be. If we, if we want to keep these ranges, then we should change the statement about being consistent with the current character of St. Helena today.
And, and I'm racking my brain to recall, because this, we had the same discussion, and everybody was in agreement.
Well.
So I'm, everybody at the time was in agreement. So I'm, I'm trying to remember why the change wasn't made.
Here's the.
If I may. I mean, we were told constantly that we had to wait until after the housing element had been.
Updated.
Updated, to be able to make those changes, that we couldn't do it at the time.
That's right.
And I would just like to see, I mean, like, like what Greg says, the consistency there and also the consistency with the housing element. And I think that's macro enough for the.
Here's my, here's my understanding, which may be incorrect, but my belief is that if you go through the file and look at the correspondence with HCD, HCD does not like our internal urban limit line. But the quid pro quo for us having that internal urban limit line, which to me is crucial from a planning perspective, is to accept higher densities with respect to zoning or in zoning districts that are inside the internal urban limit line. So my belief is that the current densities were in effect dictated by the state, and I think the file will likely show that.
Actually.
And if that's so, then it seems to me like we have little practical room to adjust those.
If I could add, in, in terms of my discussions with, with the state, there, the state's interest is primarily at the high-density range, 20 units an acre and more. The state, in most communities in California, of which St. Helena is one, and this may have changed, you know, from, from the relatively recent past, but they're not as concerned as to the disposition of density ranges below 20 units an acre. I think, as Councilmember Pitts pointed out, there's a huge current yawning, actually, gap between the existing densities within the medium-density zone and, that, allowed by the medium-density zone, and the actual densities on the ground. So if, if counsel, please, please, as counsel, what staff can do is look into creating perhaps another density range that better fits the bulk of the existing development, you know, with it, that's currently at the lower end of that range in the medium-density zone. Being careful, though, at least in terms of the housing opportunity sites, not to affect or change those, which I think would get the attention of the state. So if, if that's agreeable, that's one approach we could look at.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Let me, let me ask this question, though. Are we better off moving forward with respect to this plan, dealing with it the way it is, and then coming back to that down the road with the new planning director and seeing whether we want to adjust it through a General Plan amendment?
It, it's really at the pleasure of council. I mean, either, either way, either way works.
I think if we're going to make changes now, we might as well make these changes. If we're not going to make changes now and adopt this and then have a slew of amendments, that's fine, but I think if we're, as long as we are going through this now at a macro level and making changes, it was something that has been expressed multiple times, and I, I'm not going to say why, why, I had, I have a different, I heard a different reason why the density was like this, but I don't, don't know if it's true or not, so I'm not going to say. I'm going to do a little research before I.
Sure.
Verbalize it.
All right, that's fine.
But it has been something that we have been talking about at least for two or three years, because we would like, I, I think one thing that's really critical to the, to the people of St. Helena is to maintain the character of the town, and, and that, and density has a big impact on the character.
Well, I certainly have no objection if the council, in general, wishes for staff to take a look at, at this issue and report back. Okay.
Excellent. Good.
Staying on Chapter Two, any further comments? I have some, but.
Go ahead.
My concern, and my concern is one of consistency, and that is that at page 2-21, the first bullet point says, protect agricultural lands inside and outside the urban limit line. When you go through.
Page 11?
Page 2-21.
Thank you.
Indeed, if you go, go back to the prior page and look at the photograph, do I have that right?
218.
219. The urban limit line marks the limit of where development is permitted. But what I'm going to suggest is that you can go through this document, and you'll see over and over again, very strong expressions to the effect that the urban limit line is the bright line between agricultural lands that we protect and lands that we do not protect in the sense that they are otherwise zoned. And, and to me, if the document needs to be internally consistent, as it should be, then the thought that we can and should protect lands, agricultural lands inside the urban limit line should come out. If we wish to adjust the urban limit line, so be it. That's making a policy decision that certain agricultural lands should be added to become outside the urban limit line. But to my way of thinking, language like this is not consistent with the integrity of this document as a planning document, and I would like staff to focus on that and come back with a recommendation.
See, I, this is, I, I don't, I, I remember when this change was made. I don't necessarily think it's inconsistent. There are quite a few vineyards or agricultural lands within the urban limit line, and I don't think this was a bright line to say they cannot be developed, but the concept was to promote the protection of them because people like, people, despite, despite the urban limit line and despite the policy reasons for the urban limit line, people like to have, like, like the vineyards within the urban, urban limit line.
I, I don't, I don't question that at all. I like them too.
I mean, that was really the concept on a big macro level.
But I question from a planning perspective whether that's appropriate, and I would like staff to focus on that and see whether a planner comes back and says, this is, this is appropriate in a planning document.
Yeah. If I could add, I, I think we can come back with language that makes a better distinction. Right now, this language is a little kind of a blunt force, and it seems to treat ag land inside and outside the urban limit line the same way.
That's the problem.
I think it makes sense to perhaps modify this and add additional language that recognizes the importance of protecting land that is inside the urban limit line that's ag, but, and there is other language that talks about the priority of infill development and other development, and I could, I could see coming up with, with language that would create a distinction between ag land outside the urban line, limit line, and ag land inside the urban limit line. So if it's the council's pleasure, we can come back with some language that attempts to accomplish that.
That would be good.
In my opening remarks, I was referring to precisely this issue, so you've covered that one issue for me. That's exactly the concern I had.
And I would agree with the mayor that, you know, as an example, the Qualia property on Spring Street is zoned medium-density residential, but it's been in agricultural use with its five-acre vineyard there for, for years, and I would hate to preclude that gentleman from being able to subdivide it and, and use it as medium-density residential if he so chose. That, I mean, if, if we wanted to actually, you know, preclude that from happening, we should rezone it from medium-density residential to ag and, and not try and veil, I think, you know, by just saying if, if it's been in agriculture all this time that, that, you know, that we want to keep it in agriculture even if we have it zoned differently.
Or have something along the lines of protect agricultural lands outside the urban limit line, urban, urban limit line. We acknowledge the, we would like to promote the, so it's not something that's mandatory if it's within the urban limit line, but something along the lines of promoting the retention of agricultural lands.
Well, let's, let's let staff do the wordsmithing rather than try and do it here.
And just for, for everyone's benefit, this was discussed at the General Plan Update Steering Committee meeting, I don't know, seven years ago at this point, and there was a, a good number of folks that felt very strongly about the vineyards that we have in town. These fingers of vineyards that create view sheds, and obviously, we can't have something in here that could imply a taking of one's land rights, but maybe there is some softer language. But this was, this isn't something that, you know, we, we necessarily made this change. This concept was, was prevalent because of the fact that people do want to protect those vineyards. But I agree, the distinction of inside versus outside is important. They shouldn't be treated the same, but there may be some language that can encourage, you know, the, the conversion not happening, whatever that means, but we can't restrict it, as far as it means, right?
All right.
And I also think, are we, can I make another comment on this element?
Oh, sure.
I do think we should maybe clarify the, the issue that Ethan Brown brought up, so that it is clear what our intentions are. I mean, just the absence of something.
So just, just to clarify, I mean, what I, I think I heard was that council favors not having, that 820 means 820 as opposed to.
Right.
So we can add wording to that effect, yes?
Okay, good.
So, one question that, that.
You're still on Chapter Two?
Correct.
Okay.
Under the definition of open space on 217, there was a lot of confusion around how, what roads are. Are roads part of open space, or are roads part of the zoning areas that they're within? No one was able to answer that question, as far as I recall, and we eliminated this reference that roads are part of open space, and the reason being is we've set some goals in terms of amount of open space and park acreage per capita that we should be trying to achieve. You know, we're potentially low and want to be higher, and if you include roads, it makes it look like.
Excuse it.
Excuse it. And so I don't know the answer, what roads really are, are they part of open space or not, but I, I think we had taken that out because of the confusion, and I just don't know that it's factual.
Can you point out just where you are?
It's the last, 217, the last sentence on the page. Roads are part of open space.
Oh, I see, okay.
But are not contributors to natural resource public health. We had removed that because of the confusion, but frankly, I'd like to get to the bottom of it. How do we, when we, when we look at the amount of acreage we have and different zoning types, how do we categorize roads?
Yeah, usually that's dealt with at the zoning level, and, and it's, the difference is net acreage versus gross acreage, and depending on how you want to define it, typically net, obviously, is, is without the roads and grosses, including the roads. Usually the way it's done, if there's existing roads, then the acreage is based off of net, in other words, what the parcel is. If a development is creating new roads as part of the development, then the acreage in the, in the area where those new roads are counts toward the development. Right off the top of my head, I'm not, I don't recall exactly how the St. Helena Code currently splits that out, but that's typically the distinction.
Well, they certainly shouldn't be counted as part of open space.
No, no.
Based on what you just said.
No.
Okay. I know it's a little bit wordsmithing, but.
All right, well, let's, we agree that you can strike that sentence.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right. Any further on Chapter Two? That takes us to Chapter.
Well.
Okay.
On LU 5.1, it says prohibit the conversion of existing farmland. This is our page 242.
Oh, right.
Sorry, which one?
Yeah, it's.
First one and the last one, really, but let's start with the first one.
Which page?
L, 2, 2-42.
What page?
Page 2-42.
And the first, the policy says prohibit conversion of existing farmland to non-agricultural uses. My concern here is this seems to be inconsistent with our housing element. where we have opportunity sites that are either zoned or designated agriculture. And so we're saying here prohibit conversion of existing farmland to non-agricultural purposes. For me, that's development. I mean, that's what I think it means, but I could be wrong.
Where do we have opportunity sites that are zoned ag?
I think we do, don't we? I don't know, I don't recall the exact location, but.
I, I, I believe they're predominantly in the, in the residential zones, but.
Used as ag.
I mean, clearly this requires.
They're used as ag, but they're not in the ag.
They're, they're in, in a, a general plan or zoning designation that's not ag. So I guess it's a distinction between land use and, and designation. But it seems to me in this case, it would be relevant to, to have that distinction between inside and outside the urban limit line. So in this case, the wording would apply to outside the urban limit line.
So the structure of this, of this chapter is residential neighborhoods, commercial districts, industrial districts. I think that this agricultural uses is really meant to say agricultural zone districts, right? Cause everything else talks about a district or neighborhood or zoning type. And i- i- if that were more clear and it wasn't agricultural uses, but instead agricultural zoned land, agriculturally zoned land, I mean, we wouldn't have to make this change.
If it said agricultural districts, I don't know.
I don't know because that would, like, five point four is not necessarily in, in, in the ag reserve. You know, support community-based agricultural uses within the city, including community gardens or children's parks.
Good point.
So it's clear that LU five point one needs to be changed the way, uh, uh, Mr. Carnegie suggested by adding outside the urban limit line at the end. And when you read it, LU five point one is inconsistent with LU five point three, just two, uh, policies down. So it's clear something went wrong there. Anything else on, uh, chapter two? All right.
Do we need to have more conversation on this point that was raised by council and some people in the audience with regard to this last one, LU five point six?
What page are you on?
Same page, two dash four-two.
Oh, that was new, uh, yes, I, good, good point. That one was new, uh, in other words, that was not in the twenty-ten, uh, uh, document. It was added, I checked that today. I've got the twenty-ten document.
Yeah, if I.
It was in the ninety-three.
It was, it was in the ninety-three document.
Oh, it was, oh, okay.
And, and one of the amended documents, it was highlighted as if there was a change. One of the ones I saw was blue lined and so it led me to believe that it was added.
Added.
In any event, it seems vague. I'm not sure what the intent is and I just want to figure out what the intent is and how we can improve it. And my particular concern is making sure that we protect neighborhoods. And the word community, it's kind of weak, but I, maybe we can talk a little bit about what it means.
But then again, we're talking about the ag, ag zone and which is outside the urban limit line. And if we're protecting neighborhoods outside the urban limit line in, in ag and we're talking eight twenty, so are we going to take wineries out like it was approved in the ninety-three general plan?
Well, you make a good point, but that, the, all of this, all of what you stated is not here in this document.
No, but I mean, I think that's why it's there. That's why it was, um.
And clearly the way it's worded, it's not limited to eight twenty. It's, it seems to imply based on the wording that you could put ag in a variety of different zones. As was mentioned, it's currently allowed in the, um, um, make the.
Service commercial.
It, it's allowed in one of the commercial zones. So I, I mean, this is an issue that, um, that whether, put it this way, the, the, the general plan could either be silent on the issue and, and it can be addressed in the actual zoning and kind of the list of uses. Right now, it's allowed with a use permit and service commercial, which allows a case by, by case kind of thing. It seems that the language, as it's currently written, you know, doesn't, it, it leaves the possibility almost a little too wide open the way it's worded now. So from a staff standpoint, um, I would recommend either deleting it or, or considerably tightening it up and have, and making it specifically clear that, uh, it's implemented through the, uh, the zoning ordinance and maybe specific, uh, zones within their, uh, land use designations.
Well, my suggestion would be that, uh, staff work up a recommendation for us on this precise issue and come back to us and keep in mind as well the letter that we received from the, uh, Schudi. Schudi.
Juma Haley.
Haley and Weinberger firm, uh, so.
Okay.
Where, where they're discussing it, uh, so good, good, good catch.
One last thing I had in the, in a previous copy.
Which seems to be pretty consistent with this one.
On page two dash three-one, under growth management.
Yeah.
There was a, there was an LU one point five that stated use the currently adopted arena numbers as the new GMS for the city. That was removed from this latest copy. If there's a, a reason, a legal reason to have done that, then let's identify it. But I'm, I'd like to know why that was, why it was removed.
I'm, I've got the twenty-ten version here. I don't see that in the twenty-ten version.
No, it was a change that we made when we were painstakingly going through this document for a year. It was an addition that we made based on new information that came out while we were making the, the changes.
Could I, 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 I think from a staff standpoint, it's a little moot in the sense that the affordable housing is exempt from the growth management requirements in terms of counting the units. So whether it's in or out, maybe it's not that significant.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to point out that it was removed and wanted to figure out why. Because it's not, it wasn't a, I show it in this version as black. It wasn't a red line addition or strike, so, um.
What version are you looking at?
It's, that's a good question. Is it interim markup version that I have in addition to my two thousand and ten?
It seems to be pretty consistent with this.
Yeah, this version.
It's pretty.
I've looked through and almost all the changes are in this version. So, um, but if, if the, if our growth management system doesn't account for arena mandated numbers anyway.
They're exempt, so it's, it really doesn't add anything.
Okay.
All right. Anything further on chapter two? That takes us to chap- chapter three. Later chapters, I think we'll go more, a little more quickly.
Yeah.
Chapter three is, uh, is economic sustainability. Again, macro comments, if you have, uh, minor word comments, emails to Mr. Carnegie or Mr. Hickok and they can deal with them. And I've had a few, which I'm not going to bring up tonight, but which are strictly, uh, textual.
No comments on chapter three.
All right.
None.
Takes us to chapter four. Public facilities and services.
Mister Mayor, Mister Mayor, if I can make a comment. I've just got word that, um, the people that are watching live can't, um, hear you. So if I can ask everyone to please speak into their microphones, so just please.
Can't hear who?
Can't hear, can't hear the council.
Wow, I've been, I've been speaking pretty, uh.
So you, you're, actually, I'm sorry, you are, you are heard, but the other council members are not being heard.
This is a wonderful system.
Twice.
So if you could please take your speaker.
We asked the control back there to turn up the input too.
Well, I, I'm your AV person tonight.
Okay.
Okay, terrific.
So if you could please take your, take the speakers in, speak right into them. Thank you guys.
Thank you, okay. So on, on four twelve.
Four twelve.
Four dash one-two underwater recycling potential. Cause the last sentence of that paragraph, we had, we had struck that, um, at one point in the, in the last couple of years. And I, I'd be, I'd like to see that struck. I don't know that it's a factual statement.
What about the four hundred acre feet?
No.
No, the last sentence.
The city does not own land at a suitable location for such storage capacity, um, you know.
I can tell you the source of that, uh, is that this chapter on public facilities is basically a chapter I wrote. And that language, I said, this chapter on public facilities is basically a chapter, uh, that I wrote. And that sentence, uh, comes directly from, uh, John Feren's.
That's fine, but I don't agree with a lot of John Feren's previous statements about recycling water. And we could decentralize storage as a potential solution. And I, I just don't, I think this is.
It also seems pretty micro.
It's micro, it's not necessarily encouraging forward thinking about water recycling. And that's why I encouraged striking it before.
I don't have any difficulty striking it, you know? It doesn't matter at this point. Anything further on chapter four?
Minor comment on page four nineteen and four twenty, under wastewater in schools and libraries formatting, but those are supposed to be bullet points, the, um, the various finding, key findings. That's just a formatting deal.
The, the one comment I might make on four twenty, dealing with the, uh, schools and library is that, uh, particularly with the library, I would ask that staff be sure that, uh, Ms. Baker has read this again and see whether it's current, that's all. Because it looks to me like it's just the way it was in twenty-ten.
On four two-nine, PF three dot F, there was some previous discussion about, um, saying implement at least the requirements of FEMA relating to construction in special flood hazard areas to essentially give the, give, give our community to have a, a higher bar if we so choose to for the safety of our residents. It's, um, maybe that's wordsmithing, but it was also a broader discussion about protecting our rivers. We said, let's, let's at least, you know, um, be compliant with living rivers versus US EPA standards because they were higher. Maybe we don't want to do that because it maybe, uh, puts us in litigation's way, but I just wanted to raise it.
I would leave it as it is.
Yeah, we've got enough regulation.
Okay.
Any further comment on chapter four? Chapter five, circulation. Let me make one comment here. When I, we, we, we received a letter to the effect that, uh, the Allison Avenue extension had been stricken back in twenty-ten. This was a, a letter from, um.
Rob Fanucci.
Yeah, uh, Rob Fanucci. And believe it or not, uh, when I went back and looked at my twenty-ten, uh, document and I showed it to Mr. Carnegie, it says Allison Extension Removed. And I'm confident I wrote it at the time it was removed. And so I would suggest.
It was handwritten in your.
It's handwritten right in my twenty-ten document. And I'm confident, uh, that, uh, I won't say, uh, I'll say past recollection recorded as opposed to present recollection refreshed, okay? But I'm confident that that was accurate, having seen that in the book and would suggest to council that, uh, that, uh, that we strike the Allison Avenue extension. Is that, I mean, that's on the ground that it was done in twenty-ten, that's.
Yeah, but did we add it back in?
No.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
No.
Um, if I could add from a staff standpoint, this was one area where, uh, frankly, staff had a hard time reconstructing kind of forensically exactly what happened, particularly in relation to the street extensions. So the language, um, on page, the bottom of page, uh, five dash nineteen, it's carried on to five dash twenty, dealing with road extensions. I consulted with council member White, so I'll implicate him in this wording, but.
Good.
And, um, you know, the issue is the, the sort of bottom line one is the road extensions and how they're handled. And so, um, this represents kind of my best sense based on, um, the information I had and, and consulting with, uh, council member White. Clearly, other people may have different recollections and, and views on it, but, um, I know this, this is an issue that's definitely in the macro category.
Are we going to update the census info throughout this document? So it'll be two thousand and ten?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, go ahead.
On the roadway extensions, I've got a, a very, you know, clear, um, distinct memory on this. We had a lot of discussion about changing them to bike, pedestrian, alternate vehicular access and also emergency vehicular access. Why? The, the discussion was along the lines of these road extensions were proposed originally back in nineteen eighty. Very few, if none of them have actually occurred. It was when there was expected, significantly expected greater growth within our community in terms of population, which hasn't happened. And so the concept was, could we build these so that they could facilitate for emergency purposes, i.e. getting, um, down Adams if we needed an extra exit from the city, uh, in an emergency, earthquake, whatever that might be? So there's a lot of discussion around that and I think that we had, we had come to a, a consensus that this, this, we would, we would reposition this map, um, in what we're really talking about here. And so, I mean, that's, that's my recollection. I haven't gone back and, and looked at the tape, but I'd like to, you know, open that for, for discussion. And I'd also like to add that we haven't had that expansion. We, we, we're not able to keep up the roads we have today. I think it would behoove us to have a better transportation, um, network for non-vehicular for a whole host of reasons, whether it's less traffic, getting people onto their bikes, health, less pollution, um, less climate change impacts, et cetera. And so that's, um, I just wanted to, to share that.
Well, this is clearly an area where the city council, uh, made substantial changes from what, uh, uh, the city council, uh, the planning commission and the city council basically approved back in twenty-ten. And quite frankly, I disagree with those changes, uh, uh, although in some sense, I think the only, uh, street extension that really matters, uh, in the foreseeable future is STAR going through to Adams. And, uh, and, uh, I myself have a difficult time seeing that if that is done, it would be anything less than a complete street. And I am pleased to see on page five dash twenty-nine, CR one point two, this was not changed, provide complete streets that balance the diverse needs of users of the public right-of-way in accordance with the California Complete Streets Act of two thousand and eight. I have a difficult time with the concept that you could build a complete street and not have a street for vehicular traffic. To me, a complete street handles automobiles, but it handles bikes, it handles, uh, uh, walkways. It's a complete street. That's to my feeling what a complete street is. So that with this language in here, uh, it seems to me it would not be inconsistent with whatever changes have been made, that if there is a street extension and, 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 and at this point, it may be remote, as you suggest, it would nevertheless, uh, uh, the general plan as currently written would give the council the opportunity to have a complete street without going through the general plan amendment. And if that's so, then I'm satisfied.
So, I, you know, I guess it, to, to me, it comes down to a, you know, I, we've heard from some people that want more streets. I've heard from a lot of people that don't think we need additional streets in this, in this community, that we have enough and it's, there are ways to get around town, they're adequate. That said, you know, when you do build a street, you are essentially encouraging development along that street. That's a fact in planning. And so we have limited resources, we haven't seen major population growth. If the council, you know, disagrees with my position on that, I understand, but, uh.
I guess my, I guess my response is that this is a general plan, uh, and it's going through to what, uh, twenty? How, how long has it gone, twenty?
Thirty-five.
Twenty thirty-five, twenty years. And, uh, uh, for example, if there's development on the Adams Street, city-owned Adams Street property in twenty thirty-four, uh, uh, it seems to me inevitable, uh, that STAR would go through to Adams and it would be a complete street.
Well, then couldn't you do an amendment?
You could do an amendment.
Couldn't we keep it the way it is, the way we, the way, the way we had, um, changed it? And then if, if that was the case, we could do an amendment? You could do an amendment.
All I'm, all I'm saying is I don't believe at the moment, uh, that an amendment would be required because I believe, uh, based upon your review, uh, you left enough room that if the council decided that a complete street was needed, it could do it. And that's fine with me.
So actually, this, this paragraph on five nineteen.
Or if a complete street wasn't needed and, and that we're encouraging, you know, to do more pedestrian and bicycle paths. And that's, that's our main goal, but we leave these as study, you know, areas that, that, then the council can have that leeway without having to go out for a, for a whole, um, general plan amendment.
Right, that's, that's my point.
This paragraph was added recently, it's not a paragraph that we had put in. Victor came up with this language to try to bridge the gap.
I went back and watched. I went back and watched the tape, and, I mean, we were all over the board. But then we finally came, I thought, came to the conclusion that, you know, here's our priority is pedestrian and bicycle pathways, and allow for emergency vehicles to be able to get from point A to point B. But then to leave them as, you know, possible vehicular traffic as a study area that if there was a development that absolutely had to have it, then we had the opportunity to be able to do it.
And it's-
And my recollection is very much similar to that, but 5.2- But 5.2 was changed-
Five point two on page?
On page 518.
518, thank you.
Was, the figure was changed to show all of these connections as potential, you know, what you just described, right? And, but it did leave that opening, really vehicular for emergency. But if you're going to build something, if someone needs to build something, you could come back and look at it then. Look, we can't even keep up our existing streets, and they're way behind on the maintenance. And here we are with a map that shows building, all these street extensions that have been on this map for over 20 years and haven't happened. So I'm just trying to be practical about it. And I'd rather see this encouraging alternate modes of transportation connectivity.
I think that's in there, but I think it also leaves the opportunity on a case-by-case basis, maybe remote.
Well, this figure, 5.2, as it sits today, says-
5.2.
We want those to be road.
It wasn't changed, I think that one.
Just to be clear, the figures were not updated partially, I guess, due to budgetary issues, kind of pending the resolution of the verbiage. So I freely acknowledge the figure point, 5.2 is not consistent with the wording. So if the council is fine with the wording essentially as proposed, then we would amend figure 5.2 to reflect that.
Which I think, if you go back to the land use section, we've got the same problem with the figures, is it doesn't show all the changes that we were making, you know? So that needs to be changed also.
Right.
I would just add that, you know, I recognize that there was a fair amount of discussion on the subject, but from my humble position, there's a fair amount of hubris to suggest that we, as council members, have the expertise in this area of traffic engineering and circulation, grid patterns, and all the things that are fundamental parts of traffic engineering. So to suggest that we just eliminate those wholesale, and I think you're right, Mayor, there is room here to work with this. But it seems, yes, what the community wants, what we want, may not be consistent with what experts recommend. And especially, I'm worried about Adams Street development, potential there, because we have a great opportunity there. And I'm worried about disaster preparedness and making sure that we are able to move our people around safely if there is the need for that. Those are two areas that we, on this council, do not have the expertise. Prior council didn't. And we need to make room to study those issues and rely on experts in areas that we need to do that as the same way we rely on our experts here with legal and other issues. If we find ourselves that we cannot evacuate properly, or we cannot do the building that we want to do because we decided that some people don't want extensions, that's disheartening to me. I think we have to be more forward-thinking and make sure that people that come to us. So I want to have at least some room for somebody to tell us, you're making a big mistake, or no, that's okay. Then I'd have a little bit more comfort.
With that paragraph that Victor added, we have that latitude. And in all of these, I think council member Kroll was the one that suggested that anything that is extended be made such that it could be emergency for both, you know, ambulance, fire, police, but also for evacuation.
Well, and I guess I would reiterate my point that if you're going down that road, it's very hard for me to perceive that you would make a street that wouldn't handle vehicular traffic. But in any event, as long as there's wiggle room in here, I'm okay. And the planning director is telling me that there's enough wiggle room that you can make a complete street, if that's the decision of the council, that's fine with me. So, chapter six, which is historic resources. Any comment on six? I did get one email from Bill Savage to the effect that the count is changed with respect to historic buildings with the elimination of the old gas station. But I'll send you an email that just deals with that and the new count, so we get it right. Okay, seven? Community design element. I had some nits, but complete nits. Any macro issue on seven? Community design. Chapter eight? Open space and conservation. I did have a question here, because there was inconsistency, and I should bring it out, I think, publicly, which is that in 8-23, OS 1 point N, there's a reference to the 200-year flood plain, whereas elsewhere in the document, page 9-37, it's all written in terms of the 100-year event. And it seems to me, well, I would like to hear from experienced planners what communities do. Do people design to the, do people require a design to the 200-year event? Or is the 100-year event standard? And if it's standard, why would we, as a community, go to the 200-year event?
Yeah, the 100-year event is the standard. FEMA does not do 200-year maps. They do 100-year and 500-year, not sure if they do beyond that. So, I mean, it's a little unusual in that sense that frankly, to come up even with a line for the 200-year standard, it would require some sort of comprehensive hydrologic study to see where that would fall or wouldn't fall, because FEMA does not generate that. So from a staff perspective, it would be cleaner and probably more appropriate to go to the typically used standard that FEMA does map, which is the 100-year.
Are we on a particular-
Yes, we're on page 823, OS 1.10. And I, you know, I can't be sure, but I don't believe that the 200-year event was referenced in the 2010 document. So this seems to have been a change that the city council made in the interim.
I don't think we even brought that discussion up, so.
All right, well, in any event, can I get agreement that this would go down to the 100-year event from council, please?
Unless we go to the 500.
Unless you go to the 500. Seems, all right, I think you have direction there. Nine, public health, safety, and noise. And this gets us to the issue involving the Smith Company. And let me just make a quick comment there, which is that, and I don't know the significance of it, but at page 9-21, excuse me. Yeah, page 9-21, first bullet point, it states that the gravel operation ceased about 2002. And the sentence that seems to be at issue, to my way of thinking, relates to gravel operations. And if it relates to gravel operations, then the question is, why is it needed? In other words, require similar language and deeds for property similarly impacted by the Harold Smith &amp; Son gravel plant operations. If they're not removing, if they're not removing gravel, or are they doing something that's so related to that?
People think it's, I'm just reiterating what I've been, what many in the neighborhood believe, that once they cease their gravel operations, what they're doing there now for many neighbors is worse from a noise and time and truck, truck traffic, all of that. Many neighbors think it's worse than the gravel activity.
But if that's so-
I'm just repeating what I've heard.
Okay, but if that's so, why, why wouldn't that be controlled by whatever ordinances we have on the books? Or if we need to amend ordinances, we amend ordinances. Why is this in the general plan appropriate if it's dealing with gravel plant operations, and they don't have a gravel plant? Page 9-31, and if you look at page 921.
Yeah, from a staff standpoint, just to clarify, the aggregate mining has ceased, and so the document's correct. There is obviously an ongoing operation related to the production of ready mix, concrete, gravel, and other construction-related materials. So I would think we could update the definition to better reflect the current business activity out there. But it is indicated by council member Kroll, it is still significant, it's changed. But it involves a number of things, some of which involves gravel, but the one distinction simply is they're no longer mining.
Yeah, that's the first bullet point on page 9-21.
They're no longer mining, and they're no longer rock crushing, which used to be a substantial-
Noise.
Noise factor.
But apparently, there's a very large mound of dirt that creates dust when it's windy. I don't live there, so I'm not impacted, but I've heard.
I guess the question is, do we leave it as it is for the moment and deal with this through a general plan amendment? That may be the way to go if negotiations don't work out down the road, just to leave it as it is.
I think as is is fine.
All right. That takes us to chapter 10, climate change. Anything on chapter 10?
Before we move on, on, so what we're saying on PS 2.1-
Page, please.
On 9-31.
9-31.
I was flipping around, trying to find all various sections that reference this. There was some, the concern obviously was raised earlier about deeds having to incorporate-
Disclose.
Right-to-farm disclosed, and this is newly created deeds.
The original deeds, as far as I understand, and I talked to Ron McGowan, who was the original subdivider of that, is that that language has been in those deeds since that subdivision has been built. Because they felt that they needed to protect themselves because they also own the gravel mining operation. And so those houses were created, you know, out of that property that they wanted to subdivide. And so, you know, that provision has always been in their deed, and I don't think you can take it out. So I don't know.
Well, it's going to be in your chain of title, right? But is it really, is it the city's, I mean, is it our job to be saying, you need to put it in your grant deed when you sell your property?
No, I don't think so.
It's a risk of the seller if they disclose it or not disclose it, and should we have this in here?
Well, and if somehow-
Are we obligating ourselves on some legal level by even-
I don't know.
Mr. Brown, it's time for an opinion from council.
I have my opinion.
The short answer is, you're not obligating yourself by having it in there. It's, but it certainly, there's nothing that prevents you from exercising your discretion one way or another. It strikes me as a purely policy consideration for you to be making. It was one that was made, you know, by the previous council. I don't know how long it's been, whether it predates the 1993 general plan, this language, but-
I must say-
I'm not concerned about legal liability or legal mandates flowing from this.
I must say that as I think about it, any prudent seller would certainly make the disclosure. And there probably is some, hopefully, some language in the standard contractual documents that say, hey, all material disclosures have been made. So to me, the risk here should be on the seller of the property. And I don't quite understand the philosophy behind what, behind saying, hey, the city needs to require the seller to put it in the deed.
Or how about this, how about require, in that, just that second, the last sentence, require similar language in newly created deeds for property similarly impacted? Because that would, I think one of the problems that the people were having was that they felt that it is in their chain of title, but it was, they were looking at this as a disclosure that they needed to make, instead of a, something in a newly created deed. So it would be for a newly-
Well, I guess as a macro, you know, thought about this, is that, you know, are we trying to protect that operation in town? And that's maybe the discussion that we should be having, is by policy, do we want to protect Harold Smith &amp; Sons? And in the absence of that, are we going to, you know, allow the neighbors to try and put them out of business? And I think, you know, that's really at the heart of it. And, I mean, to me, it's a historical-
Use.
Use that has benefited the city for many, many years, and it's a, you know, it's a big job creator. And maybe it's not a huge sales tax, you know?
Two hundred thousand a year.
Jennifer's house, and it's nothing to sneeze at.
Like Jennifer has said, a little bit here and a little bit there always helps.
But that policy discussion, what does it have to do with someone's grant deed when they sell their property?
What they're trying to do is compare it to a right-to-farm ordinance. And certainly, governments do get involved in right-to-farm ordinances, where they tell people that you have to include language in your deed so that new people that come along say, oh, I'm fully disclosed, there's going to be pesticides, there's going to be agricultural uses out here, there's going to be harvesting, all of that. And really, I think the policy originated in trying to resolve nuisance claims before they occurred. So when you move into a situation like that, if you don't have knowledge, you know, you have legal rights to make nuisance claims. And so it seems to me that they're trying to make a comparison here to right-to-farm and disclosing to new homeowners, look, you have an existing situation here, and your rights to nuisance claims are limited because you're put on notice. Do I agree with that? Not necessarily, but I'm just saying, that's the genesis of it.
Have cities been sued over these nuisance claims?
Mostly counties, I don't even think we actually have a right-to-farm ordinance, do we?
We do.
We do? Oh, we do, in the city?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was in the county.
Tom shaking his head, no, that cities don't get sued over these nuisance claims. So why are we taking a position on it, is my question.
It's not uncommon, as council member Doring was saying, to have provisions. It's not just, for example, in right-to-farm language. In a general plan document like this, and sometimes in zoning ordinances as well, there's a recognition that cities want to protect certain uses. And subsumed in that recognition is the possibility that as new development occurs in proximity to these protected uses, whether they be, I mean, another example down valley is the Napa Airport. And I know that there are similar protections for properties located near the Napa Airport. And so it is, as I said, it's a policy decision as to whether you, as a city council, want to afford a level of explicit protection to this particular use. And this language is, as I think all of you recognize, protective of that use. It's not something that you have to have in there, but it's, that is a choice, is a policy choice that's been made for, I don't know how long, but certainly in the 1993 general plan.
But if there are no longer gravel plant operations there, and then what new deed is going to be, is going to be created referencing the gravel plant operations?
It's the operation itself, I mean, it's-
It's the industrial use.
Yeah, I mean, are we wanting to, I mean, I personally feel that we should be protecting that use and not allowing, you know, the resale and resale of homes in that area to feel that they are, that they, you know, that they have the right to the same property values as somebody that's a mile away from there. I mean, if you buy a house next to an airport, you've got to live with the noise. If you buy a house next to, you know, the gravel pit, that there's industrial- If you buy a house next to, you know, the gravel pit, that, that there's industrial use being made, you've gotta live with the noise. If you buy a house on the north end of town where there's no, where there's no activity, then, you know, your property values are gonna be higher. So, why do we, you know, wanna shut down a business to give more property value to people that bought a house that knew that there was noise there?
I don't know that it gives any more property value to anyone.
Sure, that's an issue that, that was brought up by the tallers.
Right.
Is that their property values are going down, which I, I...
Well, whatever.
I don't believe.
Well, we're not here to assess that.
Whether it's in the deed or not, I'm not sure it's gonna decrease the property value. By, by us having to require this, we may expose ourselves to twenty property sellers that are next to this, who say, you brought my value down, because you forced us to have this in the grant deed. Why does that, I guess, I'm just at a loss as to why having in the grant deed actually protects the business.
Well, it's protected the, the sellers from the buyers, turning around and suing them, and that's how it originally got put in.
Yeah, let me tell you where I come out. And I've, I can't say that I've been completely consistent, but as a matter of principle, I've at least said, hey, the 2010 general plan represents what the community wanted. And in the 2010 plan, there is the language, require similar verbiage and deeds for property similarly impacted by the Harold and Smith and Son gravel plant operations.
Right, that's something that's changed.
So that was not, that was not something that was changed. And so, I'm, and I also think Peters made a, a good argument. And so, my suggestion would be that we leave it, but that we strike the word gravel, just say plant operations.
Okay.
Does everybody, is that satisfactory? Are you dissenting?
It's, it's, um, it's fine.
Ten.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make another suggestion.
Uh-oh.
I'm getting another message that the public watching livestream cannot hear you, so...
Me?
Well, not you, I'm sorry, council. If you could please take your microphones, scoot them...
Put them in your mouth.
Yes, please. So if all the council members could please scoot their microphones to their face, that would be...
Okay, climate change, ten, any comments?
Nope, it's changing.
Uh-oh, my tab eleven came out.
No, that's the housing element.
Oh, okay, eleven is the housing element.
Eleven, yeah, is the housing element.
We're not dealing with that tonight.
Correct.
Twelve, parks and recreation. And thirteen, arts, culture, and entertainment.
God, we're done.
Well, I, I would like to say for the record, with respect to arts, culture, and entertainment, I did watch the city council meetings dealing with that issue, and I listened to the arts folks make their points, and I must say, I thought the city council was quite responsive to them, and that this chapter was improved.
I agree with that, I think that was a good improvement there.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
So...
One other, one other topic that's not here, and it's not really relevant, just want to put it on the table. At some point, I would really be interested in having a youth and families element to our general plan. I think there are just so many areas here of, potential areas of collaboration and coordination with nonprofit entities, the school district and the city, and they're touched upon in many areas of, in this general plan, but it is not a separate element. Many, many communities, especially in Colorado, are doing youth and families master plans. They're, they, they force people to focus in on collaboration so that missed opportunities don't occur. I know it's not relevant to tonight's agenda, but maybe in the, you know, by the time I get off the city council, that would be something to explore. I'd like to encourage all moms to get involved in this, because it is a family's issue, and it's something that is too disparate right now. It's not covered anywhere in city or school district policy, so just want to put that on the record.
Sounds like a good first general plan amendment authored by Mr. Doring. So on that note, unless there's anything further?
I, I would just like to thank council for going through the document, and, and I'm just thrilled to have a new-based document to go with and get this thing done, so I just really appreciate it.
You, you feel, you feel you got, you got...
Thank you.
Reasonably specific guidance on the points we had?
My time was very well spent.
Excellent. Thanks very much, and thanks, thank you to the public for, for apparently quite a number of people watching us go through this process, but at least let me adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.